I'd like to call, to order the school committee meetings for November 5th, 2018. I'll please stand for the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. We would like to welcome Devin McCarthy tonight as our student representative. Welcome him up. All right. Get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 15th, 2018 school committee meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Recognitions are John Abigail Adams scholarship recipients tonight. So, looks like we got a lot of them. We're gonna call your names, Mr. Bobble's gonna call your names will come up. We'd like you guys just all stay up so that Dr. Oakley could get a picture with all of you guys. It was cool, so. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. First of all, just it's an amazing accomplishment. You all should be commended for your hard work. To qualify, students have to get at least one advanced, and the other, on the three MCAS exams, biology, English, and the math, and the other two have to be advanced or proficient. And you have to be in the top 25 percent of your class with those MCAS scores. So, it's a great accomplishment. The benefits are tuition free, which over a four-year period could be between $35,000 and $7,000. So, great job showing what you know, and should be very proud of it. So, I'll call you up one at a time, the people that are here. Paul Alfieri. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Emily Ames. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Matthew Condon. Congratulations. Morgan Doherty, I don't think is here. Devin McCarthy. Congratulations. Michael Michely. Congratulations. Morgan Mitchson. Congratulations. Madeline Olivier. Congratulations. Daniel Pleach. Congratulations. Valerie Pujafko. Congratulations. John Lexis Rivera. Congratulations. Yep, all right. And what we do is we recognize them in front of the whole senior class, but we also call up the sophomores, because they'll be the ones taking the English and the math exams this year, to hopefully motivate them to perform as well, SE's outstanding students. So now it's picture time.
You just walk in on one end, he's just walking on the other end. Push down a little prongs.
I don't know if we can see Devin.
Get your mug in there.
All right, I'll take a short recess, so the students can get home and study. Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Superintendent's update.
Thank you. So, a couple things on the superintendent's update tonight. One exciting thing is all the tournament play that we're having right now. Usually I wait till the end of the season and give an all-season update of everything, but we have this meeting right in the middle of a lot of different tournament play and stuff. So, just want to go through and give you some updates, because the sports teams in West Bridgewater did phenomenal this fall, all of them. So, let's see what we've got. We've got, and this is perfect, because Devin can give me where it is, because cross-country, the Eastern Mass Championships is at 10:30 on Saturday, but I don't have the location.
Uh, Rantham Development Center.
Okay, awesome. And how many kids are, do you know how many kids on our team are?
Uh, so there's seven girls and seven boys, so it's great.
Nice. Awesome. Gonna be great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a football team that is gonna be in the South sectional finals Friday night here, right? Against Quail Cassidy. They won two previous tournament games. If they win that game, then they go to the North-South.
Correct.
And if they get that, then they go to the Super Bowl. So, we're looking forward. We want that, so. Gotta get one game at a time, though. The girl soccer is tomorrow at 2:00 PM versus Sturgis-West at Cape Cod Academy. They won their first game against Sacred Heart over the weekend. And boy soccer is tomorrow at 5:00 PM versus Carver.
They actually changed it to 6:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 PM versus Carver, at Carver, right? And they won yesterday against a top-seeded Mashpee team in double, after double overtime and penalty kicks. So, it was, they should get a lot of confidence out of that game, because it was a great game. And we had, Field Hockey made the tournament after not making it for several years. They did lose their game against Dedham, but it was a really good game. They lost 1-0, and it was, it was close the whole, the whole time. It could've actually, it could've easily gone either way. I think they had a great season, too, and hadn't been in the tournament like that for a while, so it was, it was nice for them, too. So, just, it really seems like a great partnership of fall sports in West Bridgewater and getting deeper into the tournament stuff, so. Excited about that. Any questions or comments? I know there's been a lot of you at all those different things. You're following. Planning for success, we had a meeting on October 19th for our strategic planning for success, and we, I updated you last time, that we had the mission and the vision and the pillars of success, and the three major strategic objectives. And we were working, we highlighted two strategic initiatives under each of those pillars or objectives to start working on, because there's so much that you want to do, but you can't do everything in one year. And those areas are, create a multi-year K-12 curriculum plan to ensure vertical alignment and curricular coordination across the disciplines. And also, under pillar one, investigate various elementary ELA programs that implement and updated curriculum grades K through 5. Under pillar two, professional practice, they're working on enhance and expand our differentiated instructional practices pre-K through 12, and continue the seamless integration of technology into instruction using the CMR model of technology instruction. And under student support wellness and safety, pillar three, develop a consistent approach to embed social-emotional learning expectations and supports into the general curriculum that can be scaffolded for use from pre-K through 12th grade. And enhance and expand specialized programs and services such as wellness support in a continuum of special ed services. So those aren't the only things under those pillars, but those are the ones that we are focusing on this year, and then we'll keep moving on and on. So what the groups did the other night is actually come up with action items underneath those, with responsibilities, timelines, resources, and so on. So, we're going to be meeting again after the first of the year, once we, and really work on this. This is a three-to-five-year plan for the West Bridgewater Public Schools. So, anybody that, even if you weren't at the last meetings, or if you weren't at the meeting in June, please feel free to join us, because we always like to have different people come, whether you're a community member, school administrators, teachers, parents, students, whoever wants to join us, because it's good, the more we have, the more great ideas we have, and we can move our schools even further ahead. So, any questions or comments about that? Moving right along. MSBA, the Howard Gym Roof Project. You know that we were chosen by the MSBA for a potential grant to fix the Howard Gym Roof, or replace actually the Howard Gym Roof, because it's actually the original roof from that building. And it is leaking, and if you've been inside and look up, you can see that the insulation is just ripped and falling and all that. So, we had our OPM assigned, and his name is David Choi. He's from the Jacobs Group. And our architect is from the Mount Vernon Group. We met with the OPM last week and walked them out to the site and took a look at it. They came back today with the architects to look at a plan. They said it's a very straightforward project. They told us how the building actually, they could tell it wasn't part of the original building. It was more like a modular-type gym that kind of got moved into it, so it wasn't original construction with the regular building. And that, there's a lot of different ways to look at it, but it might be that you, you know, remove the whole roof and put the roof on, depending on what they're looking at. They did tell us that the cost of it is dependent on a lot of different things, as far as the materials, what the base is like, what the, you know, so they, they're gonna come in and do some core samples and looking, see all that stuff, and they'll get back to us. They think that the design phase and looking at it and coming up with a project is probably a two-month turnaround time. And then we have to get into a meeting at the MSBA. The MSBA looks at schematic design. They tell us if they're going to accept the project. If they do accept the project, then we have to come back and have it voted at a town meeting to get the funds in order to fix the roof. So, you know, our goal, and I told them this, was to get it done next summer, but depending on the timelines, sometimes that, you know, can't happen, because what they're fearful of is if it goes too long, a lot of the contracts, tractors are getting their summer work early in the spring, and if we don't have that approval yet, we may have to go into the fall. Not really a big problem, because it's just the gym. So, in the fall, we could have Jim do outside things, and it's just one section of the building, so it won't affect everything. Whereas when we did Spring Street, it was a little different, because it was the entire building. So, hopefully, everything will work out, and the timelines will happen, and we'll get this done. So you may see people around the Howard School for that. But that should be the last big roofing-type thing that we have to do, so. And if anyone wants to see why it needs to be done, just go and walk inside and look up, and you'll see why. And then go to the hall adjacent to it, and you'll see all the leaks, because it's coming down, and you can tell water goes to its lowest source, so it goes out that, that side. So, but they don't think it's, you know, a crazy, tough project or anything like that. They said it's pretty straightforward. And the insulation part in the inside is part of the roof, so it can be part of the grant project. So, that was good news. So, any questions about that? Wow.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bobble, I bet they'll have questions for you.
Yeah, Safe Schools Committee, we have got a great committee. I've said it before, but made up of these people here, members of the school committee, police, fire, lead nurse, head of maintenance, school psychologist. So really, a comprehensive group that really works well together, and I think that's our biggest benefit in town, is that everyone sits around a table, and there is no, there are no egos, people just share information for the benefit of our students and staff in the building and the whole district. The biggest change over the past few months has been the school resource officer, and having Officer Daxter there is a wonderful thing. He's there every morning before 7:00 AM, checking students in. No one comes into the building until he is there and allows them to come in. He, he meets with students regularly. I actually heard him today in his office. Just kind of, three girls came in, they were asking him questions, like, wow, your office is kind of small. He's like, we can go somewhere else. He's like, no, yeah, it's fine. But they were asking him questions about safety issues. I think they were writing a paper, but he's out in the cafeteries around the building. So he's been a huge asset, and I know he's been readily available at all the schools, so. Big, big change for us. Another huge change was the one-door system, having entry through one door at all the different schools. It took a little bit of time, but I think people are very used to it. Pickup and drop-off has been not a problem. I think the community, once they get, they like to have a pattern, and once they figured out that pattern, there really were no issues. And they've also made some structural improvements. I know over at the Howard School with the door system, getting some money to have two doors that could unlock, and also changing the windows so they could pass things back and forth, like we do at the Middle, Senior High Schools. So that's been a real big functional improvement. Another improvement has been the radios that the police department and the school district have purchased. It allows the administrators and the school resource officer to communicate with one another. There are different channels for each building, but then there's an all-schools channel. So if there's something going on, we can all talk. We don't have to pull out cell phones or, you know, try to figure out whose radio we're using and so forth. So, it's been great. It's been great for, you know, no emergencies yet, but if there's a bus issue, we could just say, hey, one bus, you know, broke down, they had to send another bus. All the schools were simultaneously notified of that, so.
And notified all the time from Spring Street.
Spring Street is the best, we will say. We hear that. They do a great job. But again, in the case, if there is actually an emergency, it'll be great for communications. District lockdowns, on September 20th, we had lockdowns in all the buildings. We tested our protocols at the Middle, Senior High School, and I believe in other buildings. We went through a script of what to do in case of different scenarios, so that was very helpful. And Officer Daxter walked around with the building administrators. At the Middle, Senior High School, we've done Narcan training for staff. We have another training set in a couple of weeks.
It was like November 15th or something.
I think it is, yes.
Julie Amaral-Dedrickson just sent that out.
Yeah, so that's good. So it's, it'll be housed right into the nurse's office, and again, we're confident that if someone, you know, goes down, and we believe Narcan would be the solution, we'll also be calling 911. So, I think, you know, we'll have both solutions kind of in play at the same time, but I think in this day and age, it's a smart thing to have in the building. The police department just got a grant, very exciting. Grant that was put forth, and we'll have cameras on the front door of each of the buildings that'll go right back to the police department, so that's a great thing to have for safety and security. And we'll also be able to install the Raptor software in all the buildings, which is a way, a software that's used to look at some background information, but also to print out visitor passes, so. Very excited to have that soon.
Yeah, we gotta give a shout-out to, although we don't really want to, but we have to give a shout-out to Lieutenant Nixon for doing the hard work on that.
Yes, writing those grants. It's gonna pay off for sure. Just today, the students and Officer Daxter were working on a video that we're producing with our high school students to be played for the students in the building for some Alice scenarios. I think in the future, what we'd like to do is look at this, see how it works, and then do a similar video at the other schools, but also use Howard School students, or Spring Street or Roselle students in the videos to play, to, we know what to do if we're in an enhanced lockdown, whether it's an evacuation, barricade, things like that. So, I think it's gonna be a great video, a great training tool for our kids. We're also working on crisis kits, actually through Lowe's. They've been a nice supporter of ours, so they're gonna be giving us buckets, and we're gonna be filling them with emergency supplies. If we ever do have to go into a lockdown, it won't be the five or 10 minutes that we do right now in the drills. It could be hours that a school is locked down. So, putting essential supplies in those buckets. We have a couple of students who have volunteered to work on it with Officer Daxter, and again, he'll be putting stuff out, looking for some donations. So we'll have a bucket in each of the classrooms. And at our last Safe Schools Committee meeting, we talked about big event planning, what to do for an honors breakfast, or what to do with some of the elementary events when a lot of people are coming in. We talked about giving out some kind of a ticket, or something that people will show on the way in, so we won't have to scan, or go through the process of everyone if they have a ticket. If they don't, then we'll look and see, you know, have them provide us information, so we know exactly who is in the building.
We've done that at Spring Street already, with the tickets, like for the Halloween parade and stuff like that.
Perfect. Did it work well?
Yeah, great.
Do you send them home with the kids? Like, did you, the tickets?
Um, yeah, I think for that, put them in there Thursday.
Mailing, yeah.
Mailing, thanks.
So, a lot has gone on the past couple of months, and I think more will continue to go on. Again, always to benefit the students and staff to make sure everyone is safe as possible.
Now, is, have you noticed anything as parents, like, because you've been involved in drop-off at different schools, or pickup, or having to go in and you've talked to people about, you know, that they have to scan their license and stuff? Is there any conversation from parents that you've heard?
No, I mean, I think when the whole one-door thing, people panicked, people panicked a little, but it really hasn't been a big deal. It seemed to just work itself out, so people are used to it now.
And the providing of licenses, I think we've had, you know, quite a few will go back, have to go back to their car and get it, but they only do that once.
Yeah.
But have it after that. But I think they get it. They understand what, you know, what we need to do. We want to keep that great relationship that I think we have with the parents, but we also want to make sure that they understand we're doing it for the right reasons.
What about you, Devin, as a student? Have you heard anything, or how's it feel?
Um, I think people, like the kids, seemed a little bit more frustrated at first, because we're like, like the two doors seemed easier, like we were worried about, like, parents and like having them, like, followed, like, they have to go through there, they couldn't go to the, like, high school parking lot, but like, it was easy to adjust to. Personally, I liked it better, because I didn't like having to walk through the whole building to get where I needed to go. So I like having to go through the front door, but, so I've adjusted fine, and I think other people have as well, so.
I know in the afternoons, it's interesting, especially on rainy days, if the kids are kind of hanging out under the overhang, they don't care where the parents are. They just sit there and talk, and I have to walk over and say, okay, someone may be waiting for you, but, okay. Have to go and find them, but they'd be content to sit there all day.
Yeah, no, I think people get, I mean, I had a, I was walking in this morning, and a parent was walking out, and she held the door for me, and then she's like, oh no, can I do this? This is the least. So, but, so they get it. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
On to business, Mrs. Sullivan, and the conference update.
Yes, the joint conference update. I provided the copies of the nine resolutions for the meeting this Friday, November 9th, the delegate assembly. When I attended the delegate meeting a couple weeks ago, it was interesting. They, they spoke mostly about what was anticipated on not being challenged or not being discussed with respect to the resolutions. The first one, rejecting the arming of educators, that was anticipated as not having any discussion, that that was a pretty solid response, that that was going to be supported with the school committee. The Mass Association of School Committee rejects the notion of providing firearms to any educators. With respect to the second resolution, which is on small and rural districts, this was where the MAS C calls for the creation of a working group to advise the legislature on the best public policy solutions to support small and rural school districts, and further that this working group proposed modifications to the foundation budget and other elements of the Chapter 70 Financial Assistance Program. And they had some discussion with respect to the MAS C opposing the legislation or unlegislated regulations that would attempt to undermine the right of any city or town or regional district to have imposed upon it a mandate to restructure, expand, regionalize, or dissolve its school district without its consent. So that was pretty straightforward as well. The third resolution was of the Federal Department of Education. I found this was interesting. The Mass Association of School Committees works with the federal delegation to reject any notion of combining the US Department of Education with any other government department. That was pretty straightforward as well. The fourth resolution was the regional school transportation. There was not much discussion on that by way of other districts and what their school committees kind of were coming to the table with. This was to promote greater competition for bus service contracts. The legislature would eliminate, or notions that should eliminate Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 7C, and authorize a deeper analysis of the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts. Clearly, West Bridgewater wasn't really involved in that one. I didn't have much to offer to that conversation. The fifth resolution was regarding reporting and accountability standards. The MAS C would work with the legislature and the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to ensure that all students and schools that receive public funds under the authority of the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are held to the same standards and requirements in the Commonwealth of Mass. So in other words, they discussed about charter schools and so forth. So that was an interesting discussion. Again, it was pretty straightforward. The sixth resolution was talking about regarding the reproductive health education, and the MAS C supported the evidence-based reproductive health curricula. And they called upon the US Department of Education and executive branch to stop their support of abstinence-only education. So I found that, that was interesting, especially given, the discussion actually was interesting based on the fact that one of the school committee delegates had stated that back in their day of attending school, the abstinence only, and how can that still be a criteria for today, given obviously the social media and all that? So that also made a lot of sense. The seventh resolution is anticipating a tremendous amount of discussion. This is on gender identity-inclusive athletic participation policy. They were supporting, the MAS C is to help file legislation that would have the effect of protecting the LGBTQ students from discrimination, harassment, and bullying by that. Schools should treat students based on their gender identity, protecting their privacy, and providing access to gender-neutral restrooms, locker rooms, and private stall showers, using their preferred pronouns, and embedding sensitivity training in professional development, and providing uniform accommodations. And at, I guess at some point, when the resolutions were first put into writing, and prior to our meeting, there was a proposed amendment from Springfield, where they have already substituted a lot, language that was proposed, which is instituting reasonable accommodations to provide, again, the locker rooms and private showers. They were saying that that should be translated to necessary accommodations. So there was a lot of discussion about that, the imposition of the mandating based on obviously financial restrictions and so forth, on trying to have these accommodations be mandated versus trying to use a reasonable standard. So that was also very interesting. The eighth resolution was to, it was relative to sports wagering, and the MAS C requests that the General Court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, and that the General Court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from the sports wagering to public education.
Wow.
We'll take it.
That's what I thought.
Everybody was in, you know, obviously same census on that one. And then the ninth resolution was relative to access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. That is, the MAS C again urges the legislature to amend state law- showers, using their preferred pronouns, and embedding sensitivity training in professional development, and providing uniform accommodations. And at, I guess at some point, when the resolutions were first put into writing, and prior to our meeting, there was a proposed amendment from Springfield where they have already substituted a lot, language that was proposed, which is instituting reasonable accommodations to provide, again, the locker rooms and private showers. They were saying that that should be translated to necessary accommodations. So there was a lot of discussion about that, the imposition of the mandating based on obviously financial restrictions and so forth, on trying to have these accommodations be mandated versus trying to use a reasonable standard. So that was also very interesting. The eighth resolution was to, it was relative to sports wagering, and the MAS C requests that the general court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, and that the general court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from the sports wagering to public education.
Wow.
We'll take it.
That's what I thought.
Everybody was in, you know, obviously same census on that one. And then the ninth resolution was relative to access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. That is, the MAS C again urges the legislature to amend state law to require that parents and students be provided with a copy via email or mail of all the assessments that are performed for their students in the family's preferred language, at least five days prior to any meeting which the parents and students will review a proposed IEP, Individualized Education Plan. So, that was, again, I thought that that was reasonable, so I'm sure that there's also some discussion with that. Someone was telling me that in their district, they have at least, I thought she said, nine to 12 variations of a language. Again, that's something that West Bridgewater, I'm sure we have some language variations, but this could prove to be more burdensome on district, on some districts than others. It sounds like, oh yeah, of course, you know, it makes sense, but in practical application, it's very difficult. So, the five days, I understand, but the language, again, is another criteria that could be, take a little time to kind of get it across the board. So those are the resolutions. I wanted to provide everyone with copies. If there's one way or another that you would like to have a discussion, or you want to have a discussion with me prior to Friday's meeting, I'd be happy to talk about it. But as it stands now, I would most likely vote in favor with the MAS C's position if someone wants to have, again, conversation discussing some other way. You'd like me to vote? I'd be really happy to speak with you.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for Sue?
Are you, so were you all for changing that reasonable to the word that you had used earlier on the accommodations to provide?
They were...
Or has that already been changed?
That's one of the proposed amendments.
So that's proposed?
There, yes.
And you're all for that?
I am.
Okay, I am too.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
So...
All right. Sue, thank you very much. Shanks, it's above and beyond your time and everything too, so thank you for doing all that. Inclusion Matters, Mrs. Hume.
Yes, I do have an update. The Roseell McDonald Elementary School hosted a Rock Your Sox fundraiser on Friday, October 26th, to benefit Inclusion Matters, and they raised a total of $298 on that day. And Inclusion Matters, thanks everyone at RLM for their support. A one-day conference sponsored by Inclusion Matters on Understanding and Improving Your Child's IEP will be held Saturday, November 10th, at Bridgewater State University. The cost of the conference is $40, and there are still spots open. More information can be found on the Inclusion Matters Facebook page. I actually signed up for that. I'll be attending on Saturday. A sign-painting fundraiser event at Hammer and Stain in Easton will be held on Thursday, November 15th, at 6:30. They say everyone can come out for wine, appetizers, and a great time, and a portion of the money raised at the event will benefit Inclusion Matters. And the link to sign up can also be found on the Facebook page. And finally, Inclusion Matters is hot at work planning guest speakers for the spring, and more information will be shared in the coming months.
Thank you, Mrs. Hume. Policy 1000 request. We're all aware of a request that was made to us regarding a former West Bridgewater school committee member. Is there, anybody have any discussion or questions as far as what the letter had stated, or what we would like to do? No? No?
Well, I do. In regards to the policy request, I would like to open up the policy so we can review the policy, to see if it's something we want to amend or change before we vote on the request that was submitted.
Any other questions?
Where's the policy right now? Is it in the hands of the group?
We, the policy we review, I believe it's every three years, and we reviewed it two years ago, so we would be opening it up.
Has the group already done that one?
No, we're actually...
Behind that.
Chronologically, it's not...
That's still ahead?
Yep, it's ahead of us, correct.
We're gonna do it, we should do it quick.
Yeah? All right. Make a motion, open up Policy 1000?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Smith, would you like to take the policy on?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Assignment of Policies, Policy 8200, Animals in the Classroom, and we have a taker.
I would take that one, yes. Be in touch.
Mrs. Hume. Thank you very much.
I'm sure it's in their language, too.
Approval of Policies, Policy 7500, School Property Use. Mr. Flynn, Mr. Holden have not come, had a chance to get involved with Mrs. Hamel yet, so we're gonna table this hopefully for just one more month and get in front of Mrs. Hamel, our new athletic director. Policy 8304, Background Checks, Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Hume.
Yep, I can speak to that one. So, as you know, we're working with the MAS C to review all of our policies and adopt the MAS C's coding scheme. And in part of that review, we took a look at what the MAS C refers to as Policy ADAA and ADDA-R for background checks and the Corey policy. And it was recommended, and we agreed, that we opened these up early and make a motion to adopt the MAS C's language for those two, which I provided copies for you. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but, do you have anything to add?
What do the letters stand for?
It's the way they categorize, all of them, so, in the ones that I printed out for you, it's, they're all under Section A, which are termed foundations and basic commitments. So underneath that, the first policy is AA and school district's legal status, and they're all letterized, so to speak, instead of the way we used to, 8304 and Policy 1000s, and it was a numbering scheme system that we mostly used, with some outliers.
So does, the A stands for the foundations and basics?
Correct.
And then the D stands for something else? And then the D stands for something else? And then the A stands for something else?
Yeah, so like...
Those are subcategories.
Subcategories, yep. Yeah, it's been interesting to figure it out.
So like, V is like the umbrella, and then they have the background checks, and then the Corey would be under subsection D, D, or then it'll be subsection B is a different category for other things.
So if I understand this correctly, like, the background checks is ADDA, and the Corey is ADDAR, so if I visually, like, this one's underneath this one?
Exactly, yes.
John?
Picked up that very quickly.
Are you suggesting that we read these, and then get back to your next meeting?
You can do that.
We could do that, if you'd like, sure.
I see some abbreviations in here that, I'm not quite sure what they stand for, so...
Okay.
I see at the first page is a breakdown of a whole bunch of them, but what is, just off the top of my head, CHRI?
Criminal history.
What is that?
Criminal...
I'm sorry?
Those are the same codes or the abbreviations that we have in our existing policy, so Corey would be the criminal...
History record.
Yeah. For this criminal offense, record inquiry.
Okay.
Right.
That would be a good idea, though, too, because Kim does all our Corey checks and stuff, and I think her reading it over, just to make sure that's in line with...
Absolutely.
That we can do it.
Yep. Yes.
Well, I think we all should read it over and get back to our next one.
All right, so Policy 8304, Background Checks will be tabled till the December meeting.
So, can I... And will it actually be two policies when we bring it back? Or is this one policy?
Right now, it's two, I believe, although they're tied together. The way, I think they are, because the background checks is its own, and I don't think the Corey policy had a number system, but it seemed like it was separate.
But it was separate, yeah.
Yeah, so... And just to be clear, I believe our way, when I had taken that maybe two years ago or three years ago, I think we had it as one policy, and it was, it was really pretty extensive, and you could get lost in the policy, because it was just too much. So, with MAS C's, I guess, direction and their guidance where they split the policy up, it is under the same category, background checks, and then obviously the Corey or the carry, but it's just better to have it separate and read as two separate individual policies, just to say.
Yeah.
I was just more confusing having it as one policy, even though it's all the same subject matter, it should be treated differently, because they have different...
Different tiers and different...
Exactly, different tiers and different procedures, yes.
Because it's probably under there also a fingerprinting one, right?
Exactly, yes, yes. We can actually throw that in, too, because that's probably part of it.
What is it, ADDARF?
F is a fingerprinting, yes.
I got this.
You getting it?
Took us a while.
All right. So, Warrants, Subcommittee Report from Mrs. Sullivan.
All right, you people are tired of hearing from me, I'm sure. So I have reviewed and signed, there were, excuse me, a total of four warrants. There were three bill warrants, bill warrant 16 on October 25th, 2018, was issued for a total of $177,704.57. And the second was bill warrant number 17 on November 1st, 2018, was issued for a total of $141,318.57. And the third was a bill warrant number 18 on November 8th, 2018, was issued for a total of $55,609.25. And then one payroll warrant for number 17 on November 2nd, 2018, and that was issued for a total of $415,073.64. And again, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the selectman's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Any questions on the warrants? Public Forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues are issues that would violate student confidentiality, cannot be addressed during this public forum. Not seeing any. District-wide, School Council Meetings, the Howard School, December 10th at 2:45 p.m. Spring Street School, November 14th at 2:45. Roseell McDonald, November 26th at 3:30. The Middle Senior High School, November 13th at 2:30, in the Guidance Conference Room. PTO Meeting, November 27th, 7:00 p.m. at the Howard School Library. Music Boosters, December 3rd, 6:30 in the Band Room. Athletic Boosters, November 14th, 7:00 p.m. in the Teachers' Room. Inclusion Matters?
I think we can go for that, yeah.
Parent-teacher Conferences are November 16th, 19th, and the 20th. At the Middle Senior High School, November 20th, this is a reschedule, I believe, from this Friday night, the Powerpuff Game. Mr. Bobble?
Yep, so with the football, playoff football game scheduled for this Friday, we moved it to Tuesday before Thanksgiving at 6:30, so we're hoping that parents and kids will still come out, and teachers will come out after conferences are done that evening.
On a side note on this, I don't think a lot of people probably know, the money and the proceeds from this go to the Senior Scholarship Fund. And a parent who last year benefited from the Senior Scholarship Fund, it's great, so if we could get a lot of the parents out there, you know, coming to parent conferences, or, you know, having kids playing, girls playing, boys cheerleading, and, you know, the more people we get out there, the more people we can benefit, people, the students like Devin here, and get them some extra money here for next year, because I know it all.
I'm sure she'd love to have the money.
It comes in handy.
Absolutely.
There's a few of us here on the committee know how it does come in very handy.
And it was one of the biggest fundraisers for that committee.
Oh, good.
Last year, so it was very successful.
Great.
So they selling the T-shirts again, and all that? Excellent, so...
Pink?
It's a great event. Each grade has a different color.
What color are you guys?
We're pink.
Again?
It was a great, it was a great event.
Get a stick with any color.
It really was. There was a lot of spirit out there.
The seniors were pink, and there's a different color for juniors.
It's great. Looks great when they're out there playing.
Who's the defending champions?
We are.
We are.
That's right.
Bailey.
Not that Bailey.
And we do have some teachers, I guess, that do the refereeing and whatnot, so good. That's great, the help out from them and everything. All righty, the Howard School, November 9th, Veterans Day Celebration, 9:00 a.m. All WV veterans are invited. Please call to reserve a seat. 508-894-1250.
Do you want to say a little bit about that, Tim?
Is that new?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. We're really proud the kids have been practicing patriotic songs all fall. We have a guest speaker, we had a virtual guest speaker, he had to cancel unfortunately, but we have a Black Hawk helicopter pilot who is stationed down in the Cape, coming up to talk to the kids about what it means to be a veteran and what his service meant to him. We're gonna honor all the local veterans and thank them for what they did, too.
That's great.
That's great, yeah.
Are parents invited to that?
Parents, yeah, sure. We only put the veterans, just so we won't have a special seating area, we just wanted to know how many seats to set aside for them, so.
Did you clear the soccer field for the helicopter to land?
Ready. On the roof of the gym.
No, no, no. We don't want the helicopter in the gym.
At the Roseell McDonald School, Little Shop is Shop, 6 to 8 p.m., PTO-sponsored. December 8th, Little Shop is Shop, 9 through 3 p.m., PTO-sponsored. And December 8th, Santa's Breakfast, 9 to 11 a.m., PTO-sponsored. At the Spring Street School, November 27th and 28th, Life Touch Retakes.
We need that.
To point.
Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, December 10th. December already. December 10th, 2018, and 6:30 here in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.